Go ahead. No, nothing yet. There's nothing yet, Neil. Go ahead. All right, let's start the meeting of the Planning Commission of September 13th, 2021. Start our call to order. Roll call. I'm here. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Hammock?
Here.
Mr. Lundell?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Matts?
Here.
Everybody's here. Before we go to the approval of agenda, I've got an issue with that. I believe the public input should be put back up here. Where it's always been, there was never anything mentioned by the Planning Commission to switch until after the adjournment.
I believe the City Council made that change for all committees.
That's just City Council, Mr. Duncan. We're the Planning Commission. We're a separate entity.
Yes. I think it needs to be moved up there also.
I would agree.
Sarah, what's your opinion on that?
I would say unless the City Council put it specifically in the bylaws and bound the Planning Commission to it, then the Planning Commission gets to make that determination.
So let's go, we're down to, we know we can't really approve the agenda yet either because there's two other items I think need to be removed. We've doubled up in the public hearing and the discussion items on item B in both instances. We should be doing just the rezoning this evening and have nothing to do with the planned unit development. We can't really make any judgments or any discussion on the planned unit development until the City Council has either denied or granted the permit. Anything we would discuss at that point would be nothing more than theatrical. And I don't know if we need to waste everybody's time on that.
The rezone is actually part of the PUD. What'll eventually, if this is adopted, what'll eventually be adopted is an ordinance that rezones the property to R4 PUD. So it is one package item. So there's really no way to split it because once the rezone is approved, that approves the PUD as well. So it really does need to be discussed all as one item.
So if, what you're telling me then is if the rezone does not pass this evening, then there would be no discussion on planned unit development?
No, because all that the Planning Commission does is make a recommendation to the council. So if the Planning Commission elected to recommend denial of the rezone, that would still go to the council for final decision. It's because of that, I would recommend the Planning Commission discuss the PUD as well because if the council disagrees with that recommendation and approves the rezone, they would also then be asked to approve the PUD and they wouldn't have any of the Planning Commission's comments on that. My recommendation would be if the Planning Commission is inclined to deny the rezone, have that conversation and then have a hypothetical discussion on the PUD so that the council has all of that information when they go to make a final determination.
Hypothetical, that's the same as theatrical, is it not? So really the conversation we would have would take us nowhere.
Except that it would give the City Council something to consider. If the Planning Commission doesn't, if the council disagrees with the Planning Commission's decision to rezone, they will then also make a decision on the PUD. If they don't have any comments from the Planning Commission on the PUD piece, then they'll make their own determination. So if the Planning Commission decides not to discuss the PUD pieces tonight, then the council would have to make their own determination without any input from the Planning Commission on that piece.
Well, then a motion with the commission as to whether we should or shouldn't?
I'm kind of seeing this your way, Mike, that these are two separate issues. The rezone and then the planned unit development. I'm not seeing them as one either.
I agree also.
I think we need to split those apart.
Is that as a motion?
How would that affect the council? As a council next week, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with both of those issues at once. So whether they, whether we deal with that tonight or not is irrelevant.
Yeah, there's two pieces. The first is a, a public hearing has been noticed. So the public hearing would still need to be held to discuss both pieces because that has been published in the paper and there are people here to discuss that. So we would need to hold the public hearing. If the Planning Commission then elects to divide the item and only discuss the rezoning, that will go to the council and the piece on the PUD would go to the council as a no recommendation. And the council would then handle that piece as they choose without any comment from the Planning Commission.
Do I have a motion to divide still?
I make a motion that we divide these.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mr. Christensen, seconded by Mr. Lundell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to three vote, so that's a no. So we will not hear the planned unit development this evening?
No, 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 no.
The motion failed, so the item has not been divided. You'll hear both tonight.
Excuse me?
Because the motion was to divide it.
Right.
The motion failed.
It was a three to three.
Right, so that's a failed motion.
Right.
So the item stays together as one.
Then we need a motion to approve the agenda.
The public input still hasn't been decided on.
Oh, well, it should have never changed, so I don't think there's a decision that needs to be made.
Well, according to the way it's laid out, it would have to have a change.
So then what you're saying is we can't approve the agenda?
But if you approve the agenda as put, public input will remain item eight.
Neil, we need to move number eight back up in between four and five. I don't think that should take a motion because it was never changed. It was never voted on by the Planning Commission to put it where it is now.
Yes.
That would be correct, Mike. We never changed that.
No. We should have handled this last month when we got here and noticed what was, what was going on. So let's, let's put the public input back up between four and five. Approval of the minutes in the public hearing. If we can do that, then I think we're looking for an approval to the agenda. How do you want to handle that?
I would request an approval of the agenda with item eight moved up to item, what did you say it would be essentially 4.5?
Previously had been between four and five.
Yeah. And so that would be the motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda with number eight moved up between four and five, the public input.
A second to that motion?
I'll second that, that we move that up.
Motion's been made by Mr. Lundell, seconded by Mr. Christensen. All in favor of moving number eight back to where it was? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
So two to four. Back up it goes. At this point then, I guess we can approve an agenda, a motion to approve? No motion to approve?
I'll approve the, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mr. Lundell, seconded by Mr. Matts and to approve the agenda for September 13th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Moving on. Approval of the minutes of Monday, August 9th, 2021. Do I hear any additions or corrections to the minutes of Monday, August 9th, or a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept the minutes.
Motion's been made by Mr. Duncan. Is there a second?
Second it.
Been made by Mr. Lundell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so at this point, we'll have the citizens may speak to the agenda. Things not on the agenda, please approach the microphone before speaking, give your name for the record. The limiting part, there is no limit?
Okay, because of the, Doug Rexegel from Triangle, because I'm not exactly sure what I'm supposed to speak on or not, I guess.
Well, it's items that are not on the agenda, Doug.
Okay. Well, if I'm speaking about something not, please stop me then. I apologize if I am. In the past, we've talked about the same issues that keep coming up and up. And again, I believe everybody has been in favor of this project except the location.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. You're speaking toward an item that's on the agenda.
Ain't I talking about the rezoning or whatever?
We're gonna have the public hearing next, right? At this point?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Rexegel, we're talking about anything that is not on this evening's agenda? Neighbors got a problem with your dog, that type of thing?
Please.
Anything that is not?
Please forgive me. Okay, I'll be back up.
Yep.
I will, I will, so we can talk about just local things?
Yep.
Do the bikers have to stop for stop signs or can they go through stop signs or? Or do they have to obey the same laws? Because I just about hit somebody the other day and he didn't stop for a stop sign or whatever.
I do believe they have to abide by the same laws as everybody else.
He gestured me. I don't know if he thought I was number one or what the deal was, but, and so I, sorry. I'll be back up. Please forgive me. I'm not that smart.
Thank you, Mr. Rexegel.
Abol Varman. Boy, this public comment thing's really a struggle, isn't it? I was sitting at a council meeting here last week. We get to listen to Mr. Duncan there talk about how stupid people are that don't get vaccinated and that they're un-American. How stupid is it to not have public input at a public meeting? And wouldn't you call that un-American? I sure would. We listen to Mary Jill's dog bark at public meetings. Why can't Babe bark a little? After all, we know what this is all about, don't we, Bill? The city does not want to be challenged. And you're starting to see that and you're gonna learn a lot more about that. And it was fascinating to listen to Mr. Rexegel talk about the biker. They have to follow the same rules, don't they? Why don't we all have to follow the same set of rules? We're gonna learn a little more about that too. You sure you don't want to stop me, Bill? That might affect something that's gonna happen tonight. I'm not sure. Bruce, I met you at Ace Hardware and I'm not picking on you and I don't mean to single yelp, but you did say something. We've been friends a long, long time, our families. Used to golf with your father many years ago. Had a lot of fun, Bill's grandpa. But you mentioned something that really stuck with me about how Cannon Falls has gotten a little more unfriendly. And it has. And I wonder why? Well, I have my opinions about it. Rick Knowlton's sitting back there and so is our city attorney. We had a council meeting here about a month ago when she was keeping time and the council allowed it. And two minutes and she was continually interrupting whoever was at the podium about how much time they had left. And it's not legal and it's certainly uncalled for and it's certainly unfriendly. And I don't know where she got the authority to do that, but that's what she was doing. So she also claimed that there's no such thing, or almost no such thing as a variance. It's almost impossible to get a variance. Well, we've given out dozens of them over the years. But Rick Knowlton was singled out, was taken and put in a separate line item on the agenda rather than the consent agenda and was picked apart and denied, a simple variance. Up on the end of town where nobody goes, Mary Jill had to have a seeing eye dog to find the place. So why is that? Obviously, the administrator had it in for him and I don't know why, but I've talked to a few of you and you all see it the same way. And it's just a little odd because if you go right back there, the next house over, you'll see two garages that are literally touching. Okay, one's really old, the other's fairly new, four, five, six years. The new garage actually hangs over the old garage. So there's literally no lot line. There's no setback, no setback, excuse me. But Rick Knowlton couldn't have his with a six-foot setback. Why? Because he said so. And because he has the attention of six or seven people in this town that apparently are in charge but don't have enough common sense or whatever it is to speak their mind or to think things through by themselves. They're just listening to him, but anyway. There's also a garage up on the west side. It's within two feet of the property line, was put up in 2015, still has Tyvek paper on it. Why is that? Has anybody been up? Well, yeah, you all have been up there. Rick told me he took you all up there to show you what has been going on up there. Look at that place. I mean, it's pristine. I'll go over here in the north side or the west side or even the east side in certain parts of it and look around and see what you got. So about all I got is, why don't we try to be friendly and kind and consistent? Something we haven't been for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Gorman. Anyone else from the public to speak on things that are not on the agenda? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, Diane Johnson. Two things. One, has it always been the policy that there's no public input on things on the agenda? Or is that a recent change?
On the Planning Commission, it was only last month to my recognition.
Okay, and then I guess the question is, it's kind of hard to comment on things that you're gonna be talking about if we're not allowed to talk about them during the public input. It just seems rather odd. Just a, just a opinion there. Sand, okay, it's Sandstone Ridge up on 25. Obviously, that's been around a while. It now looks like some kind of a ghost town because that's where my sister and I walked our dogs for a while. Sounds like the southeast Minnesota whatever group wasn't able to get that developed. The original developer couldn't finish the project because of something to do with the land, or am I mistaken?
That could possibly be one of the issues, Diane?
Okay, because I guess I'm just curious as, what do you, if, if the original developer couldn't finish it because it wasn't buildable to some, for some reason or another, and then that southeast Minnesota whatever group couldn't get anything going and now we have it back, what are we thinking we can do with it? If nobody else has been able to do anything? Just, and that's not on the agenda, so I guess I can talk about it?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
But you guys can't answer questions now, right?
Excuse me?
You guys, when we ask questions, you can't really answer, right?
No, it's just.
So it's not a discussion, it's just?
It's just your input to matters not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other citizens to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move along to the public hearing. First portion, excuse me, first portion of the public hearing is gonna be consideration, A, consideration of an ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, amending city code chapter 152 related to sexual oriented use being allowed in the I-2 general industrial district. Public hearing is open. Anyone to make any comments, suggestions, discussion? Hearing none.
Actually, I'm sorry, and I, and I didn't even know where to look. What's being changed or what's, what's there that you want to change?
Diane, could you address that?
I can speak to that. I'll just give a brief background. The city's required to allow adult uses or sexually oriented uses somewhere in the city. We can't prohibit them entirely. We had a property owner recently request to start one and when we looked at the code, we found that they weren't allowed anywhere. So all the definitions are there, all the details are there, all the licensing is there and it just never got put in the zoning code. So this is staff's proposal. It would put it in the I-2 general industrial district along with a list of conditions. That's where staff thought it made the most sense.
And where are those districts in town?
I-2, I even have a map prepared for that. Mostly it's up in the northern piece and then there is a small chunk. I don't suppose you have an example of what's there?
South of town, the old Tom Cadillac area?
No, it's Lawrence Meats area up in there. Does that help?
Industrial Park there.
Industrial Park. Is there still one somewhere on the south side then or not?
There is not. There are no current, that we're aware of, such uses in the city.
Anybody else from the public? I'd like to have a conversation about part A. Anything further from the city? Let's move, close the public hearing on section A then, the consideration of the ordinance change, chapter 152. That brings us down to B, rezoning at the 415 Hickreese Drive, McCannen Bowl Lot. Open the floor for public input?
It's my turn now?
It's your turn now, Doug.
Okay. I didn't want to get up and.
Doug Rexegel from Triangle, next door neighbor. So I find myself probably repeating myself a lot. I've learned a lot since the first time. My couple of things that I don't like talking about is politics. And this somewhat has gotten so political, contrary to, I think what Babe said. I, it sure would be nice if we could all get along and work this out without being enemies or whatever. So that is my wish. With that being said, I'm just concerned, I, I'm gonna bring up some of the concerns of this, just on the whole rezoning. The county and the traffic situation. I have talked to the county. They would not give me, you know, legal authority to talk or whatever. I'm just, so this is basically hearsay, I guess is what I'm saying. Very concerned about, you know, the extra, maybe you've addressed this, but I'm just kind of putting it on what I, one of my concerns is about all of that extra traffic going through there. Certainly the taxes situation, whether that's going to affect me or go up, down, you know, what have you. My biggest concern is, again, you know, rezoning this and then putting that residential there is we have not, one extra parking spot. is we have not, one extra parking spot there, I believe that that was your comment, that you have zero. And last time, I mentioned, you know, Jeepers Grandma even comes over and visits. We have no parking spot for there, nothing to say about, you know, maybe Christmas and Easter, and on and on it goes. I did talk to some of my customers today. I go all over the country delivering to mechanic shops and that type of thing, and I just happened to get in a conversation with one of my customers, and he says, "Yeah." I said, "Where do you live?" And he says, "Well, I live in the apartment down," and this is savage, and he says, "Yeah, I live in a two-bedroom apartment." And I said, "Oh, well, they're trying to build one next to my shop." And he goes, "Oh, great." He says, "Yeah, my mom and dad live there, and my wife and me, and we have two kids." And I said, "In a two-bedroom?" I go, "Wow." And he goes, "Yeah." And I said, "Well, so what, who takes care of the kids?" And he says, "Well, we take them to daycare." And I says, "Well, where do you park?" And he says, "Well, we all four got cars. You know, she goes to work, I go to work, Dad goes." And I said, "Well, Jeepers, they're proposing a 1.725, if that's correct, parking, so less than two cars a family." Again, this was just a casual conversation. But then, as I talked to one of the council members, they said, they mentioned that they figure that there will be professional people, whatever professional is, I guess, doctors, lawyers, and that type of thing, living there. And I said, "Well, if you really believe that, then you better switch from 1.725 to more than that with zero overflow parking." Because I said, "If doctors and lawyers and that type of thing are going to live there, they're certainly going to have more than one and a half cars, or one, three-quarter cars." So that is a huge concern of mine, and naturally, the parking, I don't know, if I was a McDonald's guy, I'd be nervous, but, you know, they might park on the subway, lot, this, that. I know that the state owns that property across the street, but how about if they put up a fence? You know, what concerns me about this whole project is, when we sit there and do this with no overflow parking, we have no way to correct the issue. Because the state owns the property across the street, there's nothing else for sale. The road, I understand, does not belong to the city, not that you can put parking on the street, anyway. So with, let's say, a mistake of no parking, not even one extra parking, and I know, you know, just like this instant, I just, it happened to fall on my lap, there's no way we can correct this. I mean, okay, I make mistakes every day. I just made one about five minutes ago here. But we can't go, "Oh, well, there's a huge problem, let's buy the property across the street." Unless the state is going to sell us that, you know. So there's just a terrible parking situation. The policies, who's going to, you know, who's going to watch the overflow parking, the dead cars, that type of thing, or whatever. You know, naturally, we still have the, no room for kids, no land, again, we've got to walk across state, or they can go over there, or down in the ravine. You know, since the last time I have talked to, last time I said hundreds, and I was joking, I said it probably was about ten, I have talked to a couple hundred people now. And I've talked to doctors, lawyers, bankers, workers, men, women, you name it, I've talked to them, and I have not got one, and I swear to you on my grandchildren's lives, I'm telling you the truth, I have not heard one person that said, "Wow, that is a good place to build a building." Everyone is just about a gasp that we're even considering building in that lot. And, you know, what concerns me is that, you know, I think somebody has been sold a bill of goods. I know that the council is hell-bent on building this there and everything else, and, you know, so they build this, and then we are up for 25, 30 years, whenever, you know, this thing, 50 years, who knows, with no way to correct this, it just is very, very concerning. And, you know, some people said, "Well, vote the council out." Well, yeah, we can do that, but not for this project, you know. I was so thankful that a few people up at this board at least expressed interest to even listen to us and bring up issues of parking, of kids, of, you know, just the area that it's in, rezoning to, from commercial to residential. I was so thankful for you guys, at least acting like you cared about the people that voted you in, or the people from Cannon Falls. I just think that this thing, again, I've talked to so many people, you know, I think it's just kind of like a piece of pie, you know, it looks good, and so you have a piece of pie, and then you spend the next month trying to shed the pounds. You know, a guy told me that I was fat, and I said, "Yeah, you're right, I am, but you're ugly. You're going to be ugly the rest of your life. I can lose the weight." I think this is going to be ugly for the rest of our life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rexical. Did you want to have your letter that you submitted to the commission read, or?
I thought you were going to read it.
You can read it, or one of us will read it. I just wanted to make mention of it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Now he's calling me a "go ahead." So I sent this letter to John Altough, Luke, Neil, I believe you got it today, too, right, and Mike. And I'll just read it the way it was, because I wasn't sure I was going to be able to hear, be here. "Mike, if I'm not able to attend the planning commission meeting on September 13, '21, to read this during the public input, I'm requesting that you read this letter into the public record instead of me, just like the Cannon Falls Economic Initiative letter that John read at the city council, at the McDonald's letter, I understand, included in the package for Monday night. I want this to be part of the same public record. I want to go on record that I do not support the proposed zoning change B-2 Highway Business District to R-4 Residential. No residential island zone has a place in this area. It does not meet the standards of city's comprehensive plan. Does my opinion matter?" And that is a really, really good question right now. I butt to the property, the development, my businesses directly impact the property, and my use of the business district impacts any new business. A new business in that lot would be fine, which I have stated 100 times. Apartment building is not, and the tenants will not appreciate the things that I do there, my business is near the entrance, and from their windows and the views overlooking my operation. Believe me, I don't have a pigpen there, I try to keep it very, very nice, but we are a business, and we take care of a lot of people, so... Does my opinion matter more than McDonald's? And this isn't me against McDonald's here either, please. I'm not trying to think that I'm, I would really, really, really love to get along with everybody, I do get along with the guys from McDonald's and stuff. So their opinion shouldn't matter more than mine. Let's put this into a tax perspective. I just showed what McDonald's here. You'd think that McDonald's is paying huge taxes in Cannon Falls, but in fact, McDonald's pays $24,078 to Goodyear County, city gets $7,703, school district gets $3,400. My property adjoins it, I pay $22,172, I pay $4,900 to the city, $23,39 to the district, school district. Keep in mind, all, keep in mind, and keep in mind that my brother Randy has property in the B-2 Highway District. Combine our taxes, the contribution to the city, school district, and county are well over what McDonald's pays. So, moving down, you need to fact that this is a decision, and decisions about rezoning. It's just a bad place to rezone and spot rezone, especially one with dozens of people. Build it somewhere else and work with the McDonald's to find out a better use for the property, and partner, and put the needed apartment somewhere else that's better, safer for the neighborhood, safer for the kids, that's not in there, sorry, and listen to the surrounding businesses, and I will add, I think, surrounding Cannon Falls. I would love, and I know we're not going to, I would love to take a vote of people if they really said, "Do you think that that's a great place to build this?" I couldn't possibly imagine what the vote would be. We are all for you to build this. I know you, everybody's looking at me like, "What a jerk this guy is," but I just, everybody's just, just, I don't understand it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rexical. Anybody else to speak on this issue? Mr. O'Gorman?
Well, I do understand it. This deal was done before you even knew it was happening, and believe you me, it's going to get shoved down our throats. I can show you in print where Cannon Falls is in favor of affordable housing and supports new housing, but I just got done talking about Rick Knowlton not getting that little simple variance out, Timbuktu. Those people moved to Dennison. Rick's still building the house. It's over in Dennison. We're going to start next week. So, who got the shaft there, folks? We all did. And why? Because somebody decided that he didn't want that variance up there. On a road that was supposedly closed? Did you know that three days after you were told that that road was closed? That the city gave Rick Knowlton's daughter a letter informing her that her driveway was not in compliance? That road comes off on the Sandstone Road. How can you be out of compliance on a driveway that goes to a road that's closed? It's not possible, is it? Anyway, in your pictures here, as you people probably all checked all this out, right? What a farce. There's a green space down behind Subway, north side of Subway, down in the hole, it's on city property, right? And there's a pretty little line drawn down around there. I don't think anybody knew that there's like a 20-foot cliff in the middle of that sidewalk going down there, but anyway, anyway, it's floodplain, right? It crosses MinDOT land, and the administrator told all of us here at a public meeting that the city owned the road to the mall. Well, it just so happens tonight, I saw Todd back here, he's the guy that's been plowing that road for years and years, not the city. And I have talked to Ed, that owns the road, and he's been paying Todd there to plow it. That means the city doesn't own it. So I don't know how you're going to get this land that is required to be on the property of this new apartment complex that is owned by the city down in the hole with like three parcels of property between it, with three different entities. It's kind of hard to do, especially if it's required. The administrator also talked about putting floodproof play equipment. How many of you guys want, because you're all old, how many of you guys want to send your grandkids down in the floodplain on floodproof equipment and let them play? Just wondering, what are we thinking here? There's also easements that have parking on them, a dog park on them, and to my knowledge, all of those easements are to be unencroached. And there are easements that are not built on and not used, and that's going on in several spots there, to my knowledge, from what little I can take of this. I don't think a lawyer even could go through all this, do you? I'm sure you all had a little trouble going through this and understanding it, as I sure did. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Gorman. Anybody else to speak at the public hearing for this issue? Diane?
Pretty soon, you're going to get, and want me not to come at meetings, but, and I, you know, I don't believe it's the right location for this apartment building. And I must admit, I love the drawings, I love the concept, I love the idea of having that complex in our town. I think we could put it across the street from St. Asgard's over there, we could put it up, well, maybe in Sandstone Ridge area, if we can ever figure out how to build up there. But the letter in the, letter to the editor in the Beacon about pollution, and I hadn't even thought of that, and yet I thought, coming out of Chicagoland area where basically going out of your house and breathing the air was enough to kill you, and I come home to Cannon Falls, I'm thinking, "Good, I don't have to worry about being contaminated with pollution," but there are indeed semis and traffic on Highway 52, and that is close enough to where that apartment would be built, that that is going to, you know, you've got both roads going by, you've got traffic, and you've got big traffic. I mean, we've got semis go through town, and that's not going to, you know, and as a town gets built up, that eventually is really going to affect the health of the people that live there. And I think, as Doug said, once we build it, you can't undo it. And so I would really encourage us to think about the fact that it is a commercial area, it is subject to pollution that can be harmful for the people that will live there. There is no easy access to walk to that property and get back downtown to where all the action is. I know I've tried with the dogs, I made it, but sometimes it wasn't easy. So, you know, not that you guys have any power, but at least to consider it.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else in the public to speak to these issues?
I also read the thing that whoever wrote that in the Beacon last week.
Excuse me, could you pull it down a little bit? We can hardly hear you.
I don't want to touch it. I also read what the person wrote in the Beacon last week about the, what's under the ground, and that's legitimate concern. The other thing is, if the builders think that the wealthy doctors and lawyers are going to live there, I think they're deluded, because they're not going to. Like I said, it's a business district, and we don't want to be in a business district for living. We don't want our children to be there and get run over on that road that's 45 miles an hour, that frequently is 50 miles an hour, with no place to play except in the ditch down there, like he was saying, of floodplains crossing that road. There isn't any place for kids to play. And the wealthy people, they're not going to go there, they're not going to, they're not going to buy into that. It's going to be lower income winding up there. And it sounds like you're letting in a place for lower income because they're lower income, and therefore, they can't argue anything. It's just, it shouldn't be there. There's plenty of places, open spaces in town where you can put this. It just feels wrong that it shouldn't be there in a business district. You're changing that for a person, a builder, to make money. So let's not line that pocket, let them buy, build somewhere else. Thank you.
Ma'am, would you state your name, please?
Heidi Lund.
Heidi Lund.
Anyone else this evening like to speak on the issue?
Do I have another minute and a half, or no? Let me just give me one minute here, too.
Pete, go first?
Pete, that, Best Buy Liquor Subway Building. I've been back and forth on this thing when they first came up with it, and along with a lot of other people, and it's been for it and against it. I think my, the main thing, like you talked about, is parking. I don't, I don't think there's enough parking for the larger concept. I was, I'm more for the original concept, the smaller unit, 57 unit, I think it is. Then you'd have more room for parking. I think these things always happen, they'll start out, and it'll be a great idea, and it looks great, and then we decide to take it to the next notch and stuff as much in there as we can, and then we kind of ruin a project. My other issue is out, we've been out there for 35 years, and see the Subway, or the Cannonball- out there for 35 years, and see the subway, or the Cannonball dilapitate and go unused and rotting, and no one doing anything about it, nobody looking at buying it or putting their business on it for how many years. So, that's exacerbated by the fact that we moved since they took the at-grade intersections away out there, and they were originally gonna put the overpass right there. And when we did the comprehensive and the zoning, I think it was 2004, and we did, redid all that, that was considered, you had access. Commercial, highway, retail. It's not really the case there anymore. If you go up to the next interchange, which isn't safe at all, but apparently we got Casey's stuffed in there with just a regular hazardous bee hive going in there, but they're not gonna come where we are. Why? Because you're a mile from the interchange. So, we need to consider that, I think, with the zoning and the possible use or consideration of changing, you know, like we're talking here. I think we absolutely need the type of housing that you're talking about. Not everybody, you got different levels, you got Section 8, you got, you know, people that get subsidized and so forth, and people with children, and single parents, and this and that. Whereas, like I say, you got young people that wanna come to town, we need help. Lot of, lot of businesses in town need help. They can't afford a single-family home with a big backyard and a sidewalk down to the park. That is not something that should be guaranteed by a city or a project, that everybody can ride a bike to a park. If you go into larger cities, there's a lot of downtown apartments above the, downtown, our downtown. We got apartments above down there. Yeah, there's a sidewalk, you don't put your kids out there. I did when we had the hardware store downtown, we ran, you know, ran all over and jumped the curbs and get away with stuff back then. But I don't think they should have to prove that's gonna be safe. As far as I understand, you know, the other large unit they have over in Red Wing, what I've heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's only like four kids in that project.
Very few.
And I don't know, I mean, that's be up to everybody to figure out what kind of attraction this is for who. You know, if it's, if it's families, I doubt flats and single bedrooms are gonna be families and children. And, you know, again, they can put them in the car and bring them out to Lake Billsby, got splash pad and beach and all that out there. I just don't think to hold that, you know, a sidewalk and a safe, you know, ride to town for children, I don't think should be part of, you know, be demanded by a developer. But I absolutely would like a smaller version. The parking, to me, I've been lucky enough to be able to have a garage most of my life, but there's people that can't afford it. That's what this project speaks to. If you wanna make it affordable, they can all have a garage and a backyard. It's a different kind of housing. We gotta understand that. And does the city of Cannon Falls need that? I mean, we haven't done, we've got a lot of Section 8, we have senior housing, but if you have a daughter that's 35 years old and single, making $45,000, $50,000 a year, and tell me where she lives in Cannon Falls, can she buy a house? Is there apartment for her? No, because she don't qualify. So, there should be a stepping stone for other housing, get them into something like this. I, you know, I struggled with, you know, where this is and everything, but I also struggle with the fact that it's ever gonna be utilized. Nobody's knocking down the door to put a retail there. And even on the other side, the hotel, belly up, now it's a recovery center. It's great, they're doing great, worked out perfect, it's fine. The new hotel went down where? Why didn't they build next to us? They wanna be next to the, they wanna be next to the interchange. People gotta realize that retail, commercial, that's what this is zoned. It's not zoned industrial, it's not light industrial, we have a little piece over there, so we do work with people and businesses, and wanna make sure that Doug's business absolutely, because you gotta sell that business someday. He don't wanna be, you know, hogtied in, you know, that he can't sell his business with somebody saying, well, you're not gonna be able to do that because you're gonna apartment there. I get that, and I agree with it, 100%. So, anyways, I think that's all I got. I just like it smaller and make sure that there's plenty of parking, and, and that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bodett. Anybody else to address the issue? Mr. Retzickel, once again?
Once again. So, a couple things. Number one, somebody said earlier that, you know, tell this guy to go someplace else, and I don't want to, I'd love to help him look for property in the correct spot. I'd be a fundraiser for you. I'd be your best candidate, serious. But, on a side note, and Mr. Bodett, the motel did ask to build on my property between me and the bank. So, but they were a cheaper bidder, that's how they got that property. And the reason that this gentleman, what's your name again?
Bob Keller.
Bob probably wants this property is because it's cheap. I mean, the city, it's tough for me to sell the property across, next to me, because I have four acres there, beautiful building spot, but I'm not gonna ask $150,000 for it. He's getting his property cheap. So, that's why, and I applaud you for it, it's fine, it's great. But, so, it's tough for us guys that are trying to sell property when, you know, the city is selling it cheaper, which is fine. I have a, you know, I don't know if this is true or not, but I have checked with my friend up in, he says that to open this up, every four years, we can argue for opening that back up, on, off, and on ramp. And he's up at the Capitol, and he's in, now, you guys would know this better than I would, but he says every four years, you get a chance to fight for this. Now, I'm not saying that they're gonna do it, but he said, you have to go and sell this idea that you need this on and off ramp. Again, don't know if they're ever gonna do it, but he said every four years, you get to fight for this.
Put 150 people there.
Yep. Well, yeah, well, so, anyway, and then I did talk to one of the firefighters that does work for me, and he said, I showed him the plan and everything else, and he said, you know, again, how many fires do we have, or whatever. It comes back down again to, you know, the parking, are they going to have enough parking or whatever? Maybe they're gonna go park over in Subway. If I was the McDonald's owner, I'd be very, very concerned with no overflow parking. You know where they're gonna go, then they're gonna go garage the street and whatever. When I was watching them this weekend, what was there, how many cars was in there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? And then there was about five or six motor, not motor, I'm sorry, campers, and then there was two or three semis, and they were all parked there, going to McDonald's or whatever. So, I, you know, the McDonald's, I don't know for sure how his business is gonna be impacted. Naturally, the people there might go over for a hamburger. So, anyway, I just, I just want you guys, and again, maybe to go on the, who's this smart aleck, he thinks he knows more than me. I have just been told this by my friend up at the Capitol, that you can go for this on-off ramp, and it comes up every four years. That would change everything, and I would love to help market it or sell it in any way to help you put a good business there, a business that deserves there. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else? Anyone else? No one else? I'll, Mr. Steve Bauer addressed a letter to the commission, addressed it to me at the beginning. "Mike, I want to include this as part of the public record for the September 13th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. If there was any doubt when I got up at the meeting a month ago or so about the proposed apartment building and highway business district, let me say it again, I am dead set against it, and you shouldn't rezone it to R4. You need to put in a better place, put it in a better place in town. This is a spot zoning to specially accommodate someone. Spot zoning, zoning in increases a tax value of the property, does not pass mustard in the courts. Why chance it? Are you just going to toss out the comprehensive plan? Question. Good, because I want to buy the land next to City Hall and sell some John Deere from there. Why not? Question mark. Anyway, isn't the city council and some planning commission members listening to us taxpayers, businesses that line the road that actually knows what it's like there on a day-to-day basis? Why is it, also a question mark, why is it they think that a developer knows better than us? Question mark. Kids and a bunch of tenants running around at the worst, are the worst ideas. Sandstone, the Mayo area, or the area out by the school in the new County 24 all make 100 times more sense. Plus, someone wants to give the developer variances to cram in an apartment building too big for the lot. We have parentheses, that's called 20 pounds in a 10-pound bag to me, end parentheses. Hand them $3,600,000 and more in tax increment financing and have a 26-year spread. Kids not yet born will be dealing with this generations from now. I thought variances can't be granted if they are caused by the builder. Isn't that what our city attorney told us? The lot of the lot and anything planned should be around the lot, not make the lot work for what the builder wants to do. We hear one thing, and then suddenly it's okay, and the same rules don't apply to this? Question mark. It is always good for the city to listen to the taxpayers and ongoing variable business. Listen to the local business that line the corridor of the highway business district. It's nice to listen to McDonald's, we don't want to lose them, but remember, they are a business from far away, Wisconsin, and headquartered in Chicago. Are they going to expand in Cannon Falls and have another location and franchise? Question mark. No. The Cannon Falls market isn't large enough for two, so they are what they are. I'm local, as you know. Am I more likely to expand my business here than they are? Question mark. Chances are better. But there are no guarantees if the city makes bad decisions. Let me give you a little perspective, and feel free to look it up if you don't believe my numbers. Yearly taxes and assessments I pay for my properties here, $101,160, amount that goes to just the city of Cannon Falls, $29,588. And then in parentheses is more than McDonald's total bill, end parentheses, amount to the city, excuse me, amount to the school district and other levies, $14,259, and the rest goes to Goodie County and the state. Let that sink in a bit. I pay more directly to Cannon Falls than McDonald's pays totally. That's about as local as it gets. It's always good to tend to your flock and listen to the guys across the street and just down the street from City Hall. Signed, Steve Bauer." Anybody else to address this issue? Close the public hearing in that portion? So, now we're at the discussion items. Consideration of the ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls amending City Code, Chapter 152, related to sexually orientated uses being allowed in I-2 general industrial district. Additions or corrections or conversation from the commission?
I say that's where it should be.
On the industrial zone, correct. Yes, that's where I think it should be also. My, I guess my question, Sarah, for you, we don't have actual ordinance or number or anything, so if we were to move forward, we'd just say we're in favor of putting it in the I-2 zone, or?
I believe, I don't know if it got a number, but there is a draft ordinance.
Right, I see the draft ordinance.
It may not have a number yet. So, you could just, if you, if you like that ordinance, you could just recommend that that ordinance in the packet be adopted.
Okay.
Any further discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance that is in our packet to be forwarded to the city council.
Second to Mr. Duncan's motion?
I'll second it.
What was it, Morris? The second's been made by Mr. Mattson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're down to be, the rezone issue at 415 Hickory Drive, parentheses, McDonald's Cannonball Lot. Discussion by the commission.
Like, why do we wanna rezone this to R4? We've heard from Doug Regsickel, who spoke for Randy also. We've got a letter from Mr. Bauer, Joe McGawris is commentant, Heidi Lund, Pete Bodett is for it, but at a smaller scale. From my point of view, and the emails I get, the people of this town do not want that rezoned. And I don't believe it meets the comprehensive plan for zoning. Can you elaborate a little bit on that comprehensive plan, Mike? Whether it does or does not?
Well, yeah, the comprehensive plan's pretty clear that they wanna keep the zoning the way it is. Separating high density with industry, commercial business district. Has anybody read the comprehensive plan, or have a?
About a while.
I myself think that's enough, that it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan.
That's what I'm wondering, if it does not meet the comprehensive plan, does that not shoot it down? Just for not meeting that?
Uh, yes.
Well, I disagree. The comprehensive plan is almost 20 years old. Did not, I believe, Pete mentioned about the direct road access that was in place at the time, so that's changed the whole discussion on that. I also want to address a number of things here that, not just tonight, but in a lot of our previous public hearings, public comments, and social media. People who are not citizens of Cannon Falls, or do not have a physical business, and a few people here tonight do have that, the people that do not meet that criteria, such as Mr. O'Gorman, should not be interfering in the internal affairs of Cannon Falls. He has no business doing that, and many others. Second, during this, this whole discussion, going over multiple meetings, I've heard things about how this'll bring a higher crime rate, how it'll be done on the backs of the downtrodden, lowlifes, others, scum, not-wanted people, and recent immigrants, and of course, my favorite, south of the border. I, this, these are all code words for racism. I certainly hope that it is a very small percentage of this community that feel that way. God, I hope that's the case. If not, maybe we need to change the name of Cannon Falls to racist falls. Third, all our commissions, the planning commission, and all our other committees, our advisory only in nature, the council and the staff support this project. And fourth, I have yet to hear one good reason why this should not go forward.
I guess I could address that, Mr. Duncan. The Cannonball development does not comply with the Cannon Falls comprehensive plan. The Cannonball development does not comply with the Cannon Falls Comprehensive Plan. There is only one plan, and it may be old, but it exists and it should be adhered to. It was the basics of all zoning ordinances. Just a few things to consider is, any zoning decisions must be in some way related to protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Does changing a small parcel of land to residential within a large area of highway business district zoning do that? I think not. There must be a rational basis for this decision. Is there a rational basis for this decision? I think not. The city can deny CUP if the proposed use is not consistent with the city's official adopted Comprehensive Plan. Two, endangers or is not compatible with the health, safety, and public welfare. Does the proposed development do this? I think not. Variances can only be granted if the landowner issues is in, caused by the unique attributes of the property. There's nothing unique about the Cannonball. It's a known thing. The developer is just trying to cram 10 pounds in a 5-pound bag and create its situation itself. This concept requirement to deny variances was covered in person by the city attorney when she attended the city council meeting to convince the council to reverse planning in person, the city attorney, blah, 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 planning board's decision to grant Norton's variance requests. Cannonball developers' variance requests are no different than Norton's. The situation is created by a design that is too big for the lot. A lot didn't cause that. Variances should be denied by the law and the city attorney's counsel. The same standards apply here. Rezoning must be based on rational basis, once again, related to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Rezoning to R4 does not, none of those. It creates more public safety issues and contributes nothing to general welfare. As the document says, rezoning should further the city's Comprehensive Plan. Rezoning commercial property to residential because it was, it will have a great value as not a base for rezoning and could be challenged in court. This is what's known as spot zoning. The request to rezone a small island of property to residential in the middle of a commercial highway business district is the poster child for spot zoning and something extremely dangerous and undesirable. It sets on a slippery slope of procedures for the next rational request. It has been literally in court, litigated in court, the city should avoid a spot zoning. See the court cases listed, which are many. It is considered to, spot zoning, there is no rational basis to support or promote public welfare. The rezoning would establish and use classifications inconsistent with standard use and create an island of non-conforming use within a large zoned district. That's a few of them. Do we want to create that?
Oh.
Do we want to create issues for generations to come?
No, I don't believe so.
Just how much of this, are we going to rezone? Is this considered a spot zone? Are we rezoning the entire business district area?
This is just a proposed rezone for the parcel in question. However, it does not qualify as spot zoning. I heard that this had been a concern, so I pulled up the League of Minnesota Cities' Statements on Spot Zoning, and it is rezoning residential property, or a property from commercial to residential. However, you noted, has no supporting rational basis, and in this case, the rational basis is, consensus seems to be that this type of housing is needed. The second is, establishes a classification inconsistent with surrounding uses. That is certainly one that's debatable. That would be one the planning commission would need to decide. But the third piece that makes it spot zoning is that it dramatically reduces the value of the use specified for the zoning ordinance. Spot zoning is usual, spot zoning gets challenged because someone owns a piece of property, and the city rezones it, killing its value. If we rezone this property to R1, no one's going to put a house there. You can argue an apartment building might make sense. Sometimes they are mixed with business. That's a thing that happens, but no one's going to put a single-family residential house there. So if the city were to rezone it to R1, it'd absolutely destroy any value that lot had. Rezoning it to R4, PUD, making an apartment building, doesn't do that. So pursuant to the league standards, this is not spot zoning, and that isn't an issue. As to whether it's appropriate, that's a different question.
Yeah, I think probably the rational basis is, you know, it's kind of a gray area. I mean, there's other places that this, this apartment complex could be built.
Where would that be?
Well, there's several places around town. I'm not here to sell property.
No, exactly.
I'm here to have a, rationally think about what we're doing, spot zoning in the middle of a commercial facility. This is going to have repercussions down the road.
We were just told that this is not spot zoning.
It's a gray area in the courts, I think is what she really means.
Nope, it's not.
I think also it does not meet the comprehensive plan, correct, Mike? As you worded it?
Excuse me?
It does not meet the comprehensive plan as worded.
Right.
So...
I have the comprehensive plan up in front of me. The area is, hold on, I had it right in front of me. It's zoned, or it's directed highway commercial, and the highway-oriented use, the objective is a commercial district that serves Highway 52 travelers and provides for large-scale uses that are incompatible with the city's other commercial areas. And the point was raised earlier by the public that with the zoning, or the, I'm sorry, the entrance ramps and exit ramps moved, I think there's a fairly reasonable argument here that this doesn't really apply accurately anymore. Again, that's a question for the, for the planning commission and the council to consider, but it certainly, I wouldn't say prohibits you from, from rezoning the property.
Well, I'm going to cut to the chase here and make a motion to accept, approve Resolution
Motion's been made by Mr. Duncan. Is there a second to Mr. Duncan's? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second's been made by Mr. Hema. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails to pass.
All that means is when it goes to the council, it will be without a recommendation.
Any further discussion by the commission this evening? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Evening.